I have to tell myself if I try to learn a new thing, a new word, a new idea, a new historical fact, I gotta say the word out loud or in my head 20 times before I memorize it. So Ayesha Jiren, Jason Muniz, how many of these can you name? I think that's a good question to ask each other because, you know, be fair and balanced, right? How many of them can you name? These are all the people who are running for Pueblo City, the city council election for Pueblo City. So Joe Latino, Dennis Flores, it can't be Flowers, right? You don't take the R and make it a W, do ya? Dennis Flowers, it looks like Flori- Flores. I guess I could check on that, but Dennis Flor- Flores. Kevin Cover, whoever the fuck Kevin Cover is, I have no idea. He has no online presence whatsoever. He had to have turned in 100 signatures. So Kevin Cover, who are you? Only the shadow knows. So then you have, let's see, Joe Latino, Dennis Flores, Kevin Cover, Jason Muniz, Ayesha Jiren, Mark Aliff, not Aleff, Aliff, you gotta say he's an A-lister, and Charlotte Perez. So Charlotte Perez, Mark Aliff, Ayesha Jiren, Jason Muniz, Joe Latino, who is Latino, and a Joe. I wonder if he's more Joe or Latino. Then Dennis Flowers, Flores, and Kevin Cover. Okay, so since Kevin Cover, he's non-consequential until he, you know, says what he's about. What's your policies? What's your platform? What kind of representative are you gonna be? I will learn Dennis Flores' real last name if it's Flowers. And then the other ones, who are they, right? Charlotte Perez, Jason Muniz, Ayesha Jiren, Mark Aliff, and Joe Latino. There are seven candidates and you get to choose two of them. So pick two, Pueblo City. And then for the school board election, the city also has another pick two. You pick the top two and then the top two winners get the seat. So there's two city council seats, at-large seats available, open, you know, as far as the eyes can see. So for the city council election, we will definitely get two brand-new people, right? Lori Winter and Steve Norrocky is stepping down, and only Atencio and Nickel and Aguilara. Only those three will be left after this election. Possibly Ed Brown and Bob Schilling are fighting for their seats. But I think one of them is very vulnerable and the other one might get back in there. But for right now, we know Atencio, Nickel, and Aguilara. We're gonna have three of those are gonna be returning. They're the ones who's going to legislate whatever we decide with the ballot questions. And the two at-large seats are wide open, so it could be any of those seven names that I just mentioned. Charlotte Perez, Ayesha Jiren, Joe Latino, Jason Muniz, Mark Aliff, Kevin Cover, and then Dennis Flor- Dennis F. Old Dennis F. So for the school board election for the city, it's gonna be a competitive election and I want to do differently than the county. I want a robust conversation. When are we gonna have these debates? If I was any one of these candidates, I would be contacting Pablo Community College. I would contact CSU Pueblo. I would contact anybody that has an auditorium, anybody who could host a debate, who's got a couple, you know, sets of microphones. You got a couple sets of microphones and we can start having debates and we can start having maybe conversations. Maybe a forum would be better than a debate because I actually want, I care about the policies. The policies are the most important things and then whether or not you can implement those policies. So that's the most important thing. So let's extrapolate. Let's figure out what, you know, who are these people? What do they believe? Mark Aliff calls himself a conservative, yet when I asked him if he's a Dennis, a Donald Trump or a Milton Friedman conservative, he said he's a Mark Aliff conservative. And the reason why I asked him that question was because he was against the Black Hills deal. If you're against the Black Hills deal, then that means you're for change. You're not for, you know, what, the coal industry, you're not for the traditional. So he's, and he didn't have any real ideas for what he was gonna change it to, but he said he was gonna do what Garrison Ortiz is doing and just get all the leaders in the community to, you know, basically, let's pitch ideas and let's see what's the best we got. What are the best ideas out there? And let's, you know, choose the best alternative plan to Black Hills. So he was definitely against Black Hills. And the way I understand conservative versus liberals, conservative is people who wanna keep everything the same. It's perfect the way it is, keep it the same, change nothing. What, you wanna change something? No, don't change it, keep it the same. And liberals are those who want to change. Very simplistic definition, but they work for me. So, and it's also the two definitions that historically have been agreed upon. So people can, you know, conserve means to save. So you would think that environmental conservation would be a conservative idea. Apparently it's not, right? It conserves in its name, but for some reason, environmental conservation is not a conservative idea. It's actually conservative to deny climate change, don't spend any money in stopping climate change, and even if it, you know, fucks over your entire state, just keep on denying that climate change even exists. So the city council election, there's Taylor Voss, Voss the Boss. He's 24 years old, so it's pretty, I like his age. I would think that for him being younger, he would introduce new ideas. That's, you know, in a, in an election, ideas are gold. Ideas are gold. So who's got the best ideas? Only two of these between Kenneth O'Neill III, between Taylor Voss, between Dennis Mace and Dottie Calhoun. Those are the four choices that Pueblo City has for school board. And you get to pick two of them. You could pick Dottie Hempert Lee Calhoun, or R. Kenneth O'Neill, or Taylor Voss, or Dennis Mace. And the one note I'll make about this race is Dennis Mace used to be a judge. He used to be the chief judge of the 10th Judicial District. He's got a big old judicial center, the de facto, the courthouse that actually houses the judges and all the, you know, that goes through the, we have like a county courthouse, a city courthouse. We got like three or four courthouses, but really only the judicial center is the courthouse. And the judicial center, it's a big fancy building with, you know, big lighted structure out front. It is Dennis Mace Judicial Center. So I don't know, Dennis Mace secured the funding if he's just so overwhelmingly popular here. How did he get his name? He's a living legend. He is still alive. He's got his name on this, one of the biggest buildings, the Judicial Center, right? So the symbol for the judicial branch has the name Dennis Mace written on it. And he's running for school board. So that should give Pueblo City schools some credibility, right? Dennis Mace is interested in being a school board member. And you know how much school board members get paid? Nothing. If you're a city, you know how much city council members get paid? $8,000. I heard that thing about school board, so don't quote me on it, but I'm pretty sure zero. You're getting nothing. You're getting nothing for being on, but you get power and you get to make decisions. And, you know, if you're a public servant and you really just wanna do good for other people, then that's a good, you could be altruistic, right? So this is Dennis Mace. I would assume actually the very best for Dennis. He's getting into this not for his own glory, not for his own ego. He's already, you know, gonna outlive his own life. That building's probably gonna have his name on it forever. So what does, I think the only thing that he would want is, you know, better school system. He's been seeing some issues or some ideas he'd like to see implemented. So the fact that Dennis Mace, that's one of the biggest powerhouse, he's, I would say the frontrunner. He's the clear frontrunner. And then, I'm not for sure, I would say they're all really strong candidates. So Pueblo City's school board election, it should be a good, robust conversation. I would love to see all four of these folks on, you know, on the TV or on a debate stage together. Dottie Calhoun, Kenneth O'Neill, Taylor Voss, and Dennis Mace. That would be a good conversation. Let's not have any debates, let's have forums. I don't, I've been here, you know, a year, but I don't, I'm not hearing anybody talk about debates. If I was a candidate, I would be calling out for a debate and then anybody that was against it, I would be like, oh, what, you scared? You don't wanna talk about your ideas? Cause if you believe in your ideas, then you should have reasons for your ideas. So why not tell the people what you believe? And that hold it up to public scrutiny, stand next to your opposition, and then we get to see, you know, that visual. We get to see that visual. And I think it's, it's very important for democracy and instead of just having some sort of, you know, forum where people are just throwing tomatoes at each other, no, keep it fucking respectful. Keep it fucking respectful and let's just stick with the policies, okay? And see where it goes from there. So Dennis Mace, Dottie Calhoun, Kenneth O'Neill, and Taylor Voss are the four choices for school board for Pueblo City, for the city council. You have the choice between these seven. You get to pick two of these seven. Charlotte Perez, then you have Mark Aliff, then you have Ayesha Jiren and Jason Muniz, Joe Latino, Dennis F., and Kevin Cover. Whoever the fuck Kevin Cover is, only the shadow knows. So then we have four ballot questions. There's one tiny sales tax for Jenny Paulson's small army. There's torpedo the 1954 charter with the strange mayor. Y'all want a strange mayor? Who? Who do you nominate? Anybody? Tiny sales tax for 20 more city cops and a tiny monthly utility tax on the water bills for New Roads. So the New Roads question, the 24 city cops question, and then the 24 city cops to Jenny Paulson question. So you should compare those two things, to be honest with you. The 24 more city cops versus Jenny Paulson's 24 cops. And then the strange mayor. Those are our four ballot questions. So school board election and the city council election and the ballot questions. These are my only choices. These are my, let's see, four questions, four candidates for two elections. So I get to choose four candidates, four ballot questions, and that's it, right? I get to participate and giving four people some power. I get to give my power away to four special people in two different elections to pick, pick two at-large elections and then four ballot initiatives. Some other folks might have some more questions. District one, they'll have a city council race. They'll have to choose between Michael Stapleton, Tommy Farrell, and Bob Schilling. Again, Robert Bob Schilling, Tommy Farrell, and Michael Stapleton. One's a libertarian. Can you guess which one? Then Pueblo City Council race, District three is Ed Brown, who would be the incumbent, and then Joshua Brunz. Who the fuck is Joshua Brunz? Nobody knows! Nobody knows who Joshua Brunz is. Nobody knows who Kevin Cover is. They got some signatures, they put their fucking name on the ballot, but they don't have a Facebook, don't have a Twitter, they don't have a vote me for, you know, District three city council. So I don't know Joshua Brunz. They got, you know, they got some time, right? It's September 6th, so that means they got exactly two months and one day. So Joshua Brunz and Kevin Cover, I don't know who the fuck you are. Cannot vote for you if I don't know who the fuck you are. So I wish you would say something, you know, write a letter to the editor or something. I don't know. Get your name out there somehow. Knock on my door, you can talk to me, I don't mind. I would love to have a conversation. If you're canvassing the neighborhood, then that means you're hustling, you're a hard worker, right? But then you need to have a good policy. You gotta have a progressive platform. You gotta have a progressive mindset, a progressive, you know, attitude, behavior. This is just, you know, progress. So yeah. I think America's four political parties anyway, so I'm Green Party. I am Green Party. I am registered Green Party voter. And as a Green Party voter, that means I'm not an unaffiliated voter, so I wouldn't be able to vote in those other primaries. It might not be, there's 947 people who voted for Jill Stein here in Pueblo, which means there's hope. There is some hope. But I don't really see the Green Party and being an unaffiliated, so I don't know. I could see myself being an unaffiliated voter later on down the road if I don't find any green, you know, political party members here in Pueblo. So essentially independent, I think, for myself anyways. But if you want to be like, what is he? Is he Republican, Democrat? No, two-party system, I don't think so. I would say Democrats are the lesser of the two evils. And then the Libertarians and the Greens. Those are the four parties for America. We're a four-party in our heart system anyways. So because of our majority take-all, usually it just comes down to two, but doesn't mean, you know, this is America. Anything's fucking possible. Anything except for becoming civil service commissioner. You cannot, Pueblo, nobody in Pueblo can become civil service commissioner, nor can anybody in Pueblo County become a school board director, not this year. You'll have to wait four more years if you're in District three, four, or five for the civil service board. Probably have to wait two years. But the civil service board was Dan Archie Barbecue. And Archie Barbecue, he gets in, right? He gets in there. So he's the chair of the three-member civil service board without any competition. He was the only, he was the incumbent, he turned his signatures in, nobody ran against him. So Mr. Archibiqu, I think that's his name, Archibiqu. Dan Archibiqu is the chair for the civil service board. So congratulations to Dan Archibiqu. He would be a winner, right? He won his election. We don't even need to, don't even put that on the ballot. Be like, you know, the county school system, District three, four, and five. Only the incumbents turn their signatures in, they cancel the election. So the civil service board election should be canceled too. No reason to even put it on the ballot, no reason. They have, they've done it, you know, many times over in the past, so they probably will this time. A new water board member has emerged, Sandy Gutierrez. So there is one brand-new people. I would say in terms of, very simplistic, for an incumbent to win me over, you gotta do some major, you know, you have to be like a hardcore progressive cause I feel like new blood, new ideas, that's the direction. I realize the entrenched power that the incumbent has. We have a 90 to 95% incumbency rate in the United States. So that means if you already got power, you'll keep power forever. You know, 95%, I can't imagine, you know, any totalitarian North Korea. Do they have a 95, right? The uncle got fucking shot and killed, so do they even have a 95% retention rate? Probably not, right? You know, that's, but that's, we're choosing it. It's a democracy, these are options, a signature. Anybody could get up there and do that if you had an issue, right? Then that's a perfect way to start your campaign. I got all these signatures and they're saying I can't run. Perfect, right? You're trying to change things, you're trying to get something started. You're throwing your name out there and I think that takes the courage. And so, you know, thank you to all the candidates right now for doing that. James Gardner, the humble, the Cincinnatus of Pueblo City. He basically just said he was old. So he stepped down from the water board and he gave Sandy Gutierrez a chance. She was the only one that turned in, so she is a new person. She's not the incumbent. It was an uncompetitive race, which, you know, disappoints me, but it's a brand-new person. So, you know, the water board is gonna see some change, the civil service board and the county school board are not. So that's, that's our election. That's what we're looking at here. I want to talk about some of the history real fast and then that'll be it. So the, when you compare the two elections, when you compare this election with last year's election, it's apples and oranges. Last year's election was way too much democracy. It's so much democracy, it made you wanna puke. There was a state ballot question that had offered, they had actually said, you know, whether or not it's okay for assisted suicide. If Jack Kevorkian operated his business in Colorado today, it's legal cause the, you know, that was a question on the ballot for the state. And there was, you know, Amendment 71, Amendment 72, Amendment U. There was a single payer healthcare amendment. So there was 19 total ballot questions last year, 2016, for Pueblo, for a Pueblo City voter. Nine state ballot questions and 10 local ballot questions. So they're having to figure out all these state ballot issues and then 10 local ballot issues. And then five of those local ballot issues had to deal with marijuana. And three of them, the prohibition of marijuana. So there was three ballot questions in Pueblo last year that tried to re-illegalize, go back to prohibition, go backwards. There were some reactionaries that tried to destroy the marijuana industry here in Pueblo. They tried to destroy it. And, you know, that's bullshit, it makes me mad, but it backfired on them in the most, you know, delicious way ever. Now, since you put it on the ballot and the people voted in favor of it, it's here to stay. Pueblo City is the Napa Valley of marijuana industry, okay? Pueblo City's gonna go 100% green by 2035. We're going to be, this is the front lines, you know, the marijuana legalization, this, the change that I, you know, just as far as the eye can see. We can change everything, we can change it all. And so I'm happy that, you know, Pueblo doubled down and re-legalized marijuana. So it's here to stay. Pueblo City and marijuana, there's, you know, what, 1,500 jobs, there's 150 grows, there's this sunshine belt, so this is a very good, the steel mill's going down, so this is a good. God, we're all gonna be fucking rich. We're all gonna be rich. Hopefully it's being equator, equally distributed, right? So hopefully we're all getting the benefits of this good marijuana booming, you know, economy. It's not the healthiest substance. People are allowed to, you know, get high if they want to. They're allowed to drink alcohol if they want to. So, you know, make sure we don't target children and I think there's some other regulations, but mostly, I don't know, I would love to see cannabis gardens. Let's everybody raise and then pass little spice pouches to one another. So we're the Napa Valley. I'm gonna tell you about the numbers on that. So let me just, last year Pueblo had 10 appeals court judges. So if you're a voter in Pueblo, you had to study all 10 appeals court judges, learn to be informed in voters and learn all about, you know, the judge, who they are, what their policies are, which, you know, Pueblo loves their appeals judges. They love their district judges. They love every judge that's, if anybody has the name Judge next to them. Pueblo County and the city has never met a judge they did not like. They love the fucking judge. Let's look at these numbers, overwhelming, 70% super majorities. They're retained by super majorities. The state Supreme Court, there's three district judges, a state board race, Board of Regents of University of Colorado, the state senator race, three state representative races, District Attorney race, two county commissioner races. And then there was the US Senate Bennett versus Glenn in a US presidential race, right? Jill Stein versus Gary Johnson. And that's what last year, right? On top of the 19 ballot questions that they had to decide. So the, that was basically, I would think that they're traumatized by it. And if I was just to be a guessing man, it's only one year later, so the Trump people could still be excited about democracy, but I think they're gonna be complacent. And I think that there's gonna be a groundswell of progressive votes for this election. I also think that in, next year is gonna be, you know, the, all the state elections, state reps and state senators and the US senators or the US representatives. All those are up for election too. So that's in the governor's race. So next year's gonna be a huge election year for Colorado, but for the United States as well. So in and off year, this is the first year, right? Trump's been president for one year. Well, how has the city of Pueblo resonated? This is a Trump town. This is a Trump county. We, you know, the county of Pueblo voted for Donald Trump over Hillary by 390 votes. So let's, let's get into the numbers there, right? So Donald Trump was voted president by Pueblo in November 2016 by 390 votes. The total, the total vote between the two was 36,265 versus 35,875. 390 votes, that's close. By the skin of his chinny-chin chin did Trump win here by half a percentage point, by 0.5% Trump beat Hillary. So barely, and it's remarkable because Pueblo, at least the city, is a diverse democratic working town. It's a big city town. Diverse, democratic, most, mostly Democrats here, working-class people, Hispanics and white people. So they voted for Trump to become president of these poor, dear United States. So Donald J. Trump and Michael Pence won the plurality vote. 46% versus Hillary's 46%. They both got, you round up, but just by 0.5%. Neither one of them won the majority. Instant runoff voting would've got us a majority. Libertarians, Gary Johnson and Bill Weld got 4,072 votes, 5.18%. In the Green Party, Jill Stein and Ajumu Baraka garnered 942 votes, 1.2% to round out the top four. So 1% for Jill Stein, 5% for Gary Johnson, and then, you know, 46% for Hillary and Trump, with Trump narrowly winning. Now, some fucking Democrats, they might get it in their head that they're gonna start blaming Jill Stein. Well, hold on, let me tell you about these other two, the top six, okay? Just this helps my argument. Evan McMullin, he was a big name. I mean, he got in a couple states, he got in, you know, Colorado. So Evan McMullin, Nathan Johnson got 441 votes, which is 0.56%. And Darrell L. Castle and Scott N. Bradley, their ticket got 427 votes, which is 0.54% to round out the top six. Now, the reason why I mention those two is because they were above 0.5%. Remember, Trump beat Hillary by 0.5%. 0.5% exactly, like on the dot. And then 0.56%, 0.54, so 390. Let's just go with the votes, not the percentage. So Donald Trump beat Hillary by 390 votes. So Scott, Darrell Castle and Scott Bradley got 427 votes. 420 is greater than 390. If the people who voted for Darrell Castle would not have voted for Darrell Castle and they would have voted for Hillary Clinton, Hillary Clinton would have won Pueblo. So, you know, this, Pueblo is Mark Acosen. This is just one county, right? One district in the entire United States. But I think it's, it's emblematic of the conversation that we're having nationally because what the Democrats are trying to say, they're trying to say that if the Jill Stein voters, the 947 Jill Stein voters didn't go vote, then that means they would have voted for Hillary, therefore Hillary would have became president. So it's not Hillary's fault. Hillary wasn't a shitty candidate with a shitty personality, with a shitty agenda. She wasn't a, you know, she's a right-wing Goldwater girl who loves Kissinger. She's not even, she's barely a Democrat, you know? She likes the Democratic Party, but it's neoliberal, so they're very right-wing conservative. She never had my vote to begin with at all. If I, if Jill Stein wasn't there, then I would have voted for somebody else. So the argument is ridiculous. You don't have my vote, you gotta win me over. I gotta vote for you. I did not believe in Hillary. I did not look at Hillary and be like, yes, God, she is our leader. I can't wait. Nobody did. So the argument is since 947 people voted for Jill Stein and Hillary lost by 490 votes, therefore if those 947 would have voted for Hillary, then Hillary would have won. That's true. If you wanna keep that assumption, let's assume that's the case, okay? That any of these independents, if they would have had their real choice, they would have chosen. Instant runoff voting would stop that from happening if you really wanna, you know, affect electoral change. But people who bitch about third parties, they don't want electoral change. They don't wanna include third parties. They're anti-third party. So they're, that's the second-class citizen. That might be our final frontier. We need to stop discriminating against our independents. But Jill Stein, 947. All right, fine. All right, yeah, she had more votes than the spread between Hillary and Donald. But so did Darrell Castle and Scott N. Bradley. So did Evan McMullin and Nathan Johnson. They had more than 390 votes. You wanna blame Jill Stein? Blame Evan McMullin. You wanna blame Ajumu Baraka? Blame Scott N. Bradley too. Say it all in one breath, Democratic Party. Why the fuck would the Democratic Party pinpoint the Green Party? Jill Stein is, you know, Martin Luther King quality kinda politician. She's gonna live in infamy forever, ever and ever. She's my spiritual goddess. Even if she was to, something happened to her tomorrow, she is great person. The Democrats failed to fucking see that. They didn't see that. Why? Why did they not see that? Cause she actually believes in something and they don't? So you wanna blame Jill Stein? Make sure you mention Evan McMullin. Make sure you mention Darrell L. Castle. And make sure you mention, if you're in Pueblo, Gary Johnson. Since Gary Johnson got over 4,000 votes, he got 5%. So if you're only mentioning the Green Party, you're showing your fucking ass. You're showing your bias. You're saying you're against true blue progressives, people who actually believe in left values. You're saying you're against them. You're more likely to work with, what, Republicans and Libertarians than you are with Greens? That you're showing your ass, you piece of shit. You relate to the Republicans more than you do to the Green Party because you're a corporatist, right-wing, warmonger, low-life piece of shit. Now, if you looked at Jill and you said, you know, I like her, I like her policies, but, you know, I did this, that's, that's the way you should have been. That would make more sense. But instead you're, you're hating MLK because our horse race election, you picked shitlery and, you know, you're mad at Jill for taking the fucking votes. You know, you can be all shitty and try to just fucking bully us into your way of thinking, but see, there's a method to my madness. You wanna win me over, then speak about my issues. You know, when Hillary is for the border wall, when she's for DOMA, she's against gay people, she's against marijuana, saying the research is still out. She's for border wall, for the war, for Kissinger. She's a Goldwater girl. She's a corporatist, loves Goldman Sachs. She's not a fucking progressive. And I didn't get to get into the numbers for the pot, so I'll just make a whole video on that one. But, you know, blame Gary Johnson. Gary Johnson was a bigger spoiler than Jill Stein here in Pueblo.